Will the council meeting of January 7th, 2025 please come to order? Ms. Clerk, roll call.
Chair proceeding with roll call. Just Member Johnson, if you could let us know when we get to you, whether you're in your space alone or not. Councilmember Pro Tempore Tasha Kama.
Aloha Kakahia, K'chir, and ni hao.
Vice Chair Yukile Sugimura.
Good morning, ni hao, and kunhi pachoi.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Ni hao ma, kunhi pachoi.
Councilmember Gabe Johnson.
Chair, council members, committee members, there's no testifiers at the Lanai District office. I'm alone on my side of the office in beautiful Lanai City, and the birds are snoring and the dogs are chirping.
Councilmember Kiani Rollins, Deputy Corporation Counsel Mimi Desjardins, and Deputy Corporation Counsel Kristi Rigglesworth.
Opening remarks will be provided by Councilmember Kiani Rollins Fernandez.
Mahalo Chair. Okay, boys and girls. I prepared a quick lesson for my opening remarks today. Get your note-taking instruments ready. Hao oli mahina oleroha vai'i. Happy Black History Month and kunhi pachoi. The Lion Dancers will be joining us in the chambers soon. I love the Lion Dance, even though I'm not Chinese. I love the drums and the excitement and appreciate the amount of work that goes into it. New Year is celebrated in the fifth month of the lunar calendar, which is April of the solar calendar. The Hindu New Year, Ugadi, is celebrated on the first day of the Hindu month of Chaitra, which usually falls in late March or early April. The Persian New Year is called Nowruz, celebrated in March. In North Africa's Maghreb region, New Year's Eve is celebrated around the 12th or 15th of January. The Berber people of North Africa celebrate Yenayir in accordance with the Julian calendar. Ethiopia and Eritrea, probably mispronounced that, sorry, celebrate their New Year called Nkutata, five months, which is similar to Kanaka Uyvi tradition. We celebrate Makahiki, which is marked by the rising of the constellation Makali'i over the horizon at sunset around late October, early November. Makahiki is a season of lono, of peace, fertility, agriculture, rainfall, and it lasts for about four months. Our Molokai community celebrates Kahelelono, the marching of lono across the island, from the east to the west, greeted at each ahupua with ho'okupu, mahalo tu keo and her team. And we celebrate with Makahiki games like Hakamoa, my favorite, Huki Huki, Kukini, Ulumaika, Konane, and Oma. Wealth building is community building. And community is the answer, whatever the problem. Lonoi ka Makahiki.
Mahalo Chair.
Wow, that was very beautiful, bringing the whole world together. Thank you. Ms. Clerk.
Chair next would be the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, please join me.
Will the council meeting of January 7th, 2025 please come to order? Ms. Clerk, roll call.
Chair proceeding with roll call. Just Member Johnson, if you could let us know when we get to you whether you're in your space alone or not. Councilmember Pro Tem Pori Tasha Kama.
Aloha Kakahia, Chair, and ni hao.
Vice Chair Yukile Sugimura.
Good morning, ni hao, and kunhi pachoi.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Ni hao ma, kunhi pachoi.
Councilmember Gabe Johnson.
Chair, councilmembers, committee members, there's no testifiers at the Lanai District Office. I'm alone on my side of the office in beautiful Lanai City, and the birds are snoring and the dogs are chirping.
Councilmember Kiani Rollins, Deputy Corporation Counsel Mimi Desjardin, and Deputy Corporation Counsel Kristi Rigglesworth.
Opening remarks will be provided by Councilmember Kiani Rollins Fernandez.
Mahalo Chair. Okay, boys and girls. I prepared a quick lesson for my opening remarks today. Get your note-taking instruments ready. Hao oli mahina o lehava'i. Happy Black History Month and kunhi pachoi. The Lion Dancers will be joining us in the chambers soon. I love the Lion Dance, even though I'm not Chinese. I love the drums and the excitement, and appreciate the amount of work that goes in. New Year is celebrated in the fifth month of the lunar calendar, which is April of the solar calendar. The Hindu New Year, Ugadi, is celebrated on the first day of the Hindu month of Chaitra, which usually falls in late March or early April. The Persian New Year is called Nowruz, celebrated in March. In North Africa's Maghreb region, New Year's Eve is celebrated around the 12th or 15th of January. The Berber people of North Africa celebrate Yenayir in accordance with the Julian calendar. Ethiopia and Eretia, probably mispronounced that, sorry, celebrate their New Year called Nkutata, five months, which is similar to Kanaka Uyvi tradition. We celebrate Makahiki, which is marked by the rising of the constellation Makali'i over the horizon at sunset around late October, early November. Makahiki is a season of lono, of peace, fertility, agriculture, rainfall, and it lasts for about four months. Our Molokai community is celebrated with kahele'olo'ono, the marching of lono across the island, from the east to the west, greeted at each ahupua with ho'okupu, mahalo tu keo and her team. And we celebrate with Makahiki games like hakamoa, my favorite, huki huki, kukini, ulumaika, konane, and uma. Lens. Wealth building is community building. And community is the answer, whatever the problem. Lono ika Makahiki. Mahalo Chair.
Wow, that was very beautiful, bringing the whole world together. Thank you. Ms. Clerk.
Chair, next would be the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, please join me. Majority of present council, majority of present council members be ejected or banned from council meetings, or, if participating remotely, muted or dropped from the meeting. Examples of disruptive behavior include, but are not limited to heckling, shouting, use of profanity, threatening or slanderous remarks made to any member of the council, staff, or general public. So, Ms. Clerk, could you proceed at this time?
Thank you, Chair. Proceeding with presentation of written or oral testimony. At this time, individuals may testify on any item on the meeting agenda. The first testifier is Amy Johnson, testifying on Resolution 2547, and she will be followed by Leslie Milner.
Aloha, Council Chair Lee, and councilmembers. My name is Amy Johnson, and I'm the Development Director for the J. Walter Cameron Center. For over 51 years, the Cameron Center has been the resource hub for nonprofits and social service programs. Currently, we have 25 resident agencies who provide over 150 programs for Maui residents. I'm testifying today in support of Resolution 25-47 for approval of a tenant lease for the Nahale Kapuna project. The Cameron Center is proud to be a part of the Nahale Kapuna project. Mahalo for your vision and support. While this is a small project, Nahale Kapuna has brought a sense of hope and stability to our kapuna who have faced unimaginable challenges since the August 2023 wildfires. The Cameron Center is the administrator and property manager for the project, which was launched in November 2024. I have submitted written testimony that details the process and the data for the project, and happy to answer any questions. On behalf of the J. Walter Cameron Center, mahalo nui loa for your leadership and commitment to our kapuna. Nahale Kapuna is a small project in relation to the overwhelming need for affordable housing in our aging community. These folks hold the wisdom of our culture, and they need our help. We are honored to be a part of the solution that directly addresses the need for permanent housing, and we look forward to continuing our partnership with the county, making meaningful impacts in our community. Mahalo.
Thank you, members. Questions? Vice Chair Sugimura.
Thank you. Thank you for coming here to testify. Altogether, I believe you will be managing then all of the individual units that the CDBG office has purchased?
Correct.
How many units are you managing now?
There are seven units in the project currently.
And how many of them are... Okay. More to come, more to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions for the testifier? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Clerk.
Chair, the next testifier is Leslie Milner, testifying on Bills 11, 12, 13, and 14, and she will be followed by Patient Kaisin Kahula.
Ni hao and aloha, Chair and members.
Morning.
I'm gonna try and talk fast, but not too fast. Requesting floor action on four bills today. Bill 11, which is adding additional grant funds to a grant that is already in the budget under the Department of Public Works for USDA NRCS. These funds will be used for the Kulana Hakoi Stream Sediment Removal Emergency Watershed Protection Project. The council has already authorized the mayor to enter into an intergovernmental agreement related to this, but the funds were inadvertently not added to the budget at the same time. The second one is Bill 12, which is, again, additional funds for a project that is already in the budget under Department of Police, the Paul Coverdale Forensic Sciences Improvement Act. These funds will be used to replace obsolete gas chromatograph mass spectrometer that's used in forensic drug analysis. And the final two are Bills 13 and 14. These relate to the Von Thamesky acquisition. We would like to change the funding source for 9.1 million from bond fund to general fund. As you all know, we have a ceiling on our loan transfers, and we're starting to get close to that, so we would like to move that 9.1 million to general fund so as not to exceed our $100 million ceiling. The closing date on that property is March 7th, which is why we're asking for floor action today. We are not asking for floor action on Bill 15 at this time. That also relates to the cap, and we think the council will probably want to have further discussion on that, so I just wanted to make clear not asking for floor action on Bill 15. Happy to discuss that in committee. Thank you, Chair.
Questions? Director Milner. Okay, which one again is, I know if you mentioned Von Thamesky's project? Is it 13?
13 and 14, yes.
13 and 14?
Yes, one amends the budget ordinance and one amends the bond ordinance to reduce the amount authorized for bond by 9.1 million.
I'm just curious, why do we, it seems that this Von Thamesky transaction is one of the longest transactions I can think of. Is there any particular problem with this?
Thank you, Chair. No, I'm not aware of any problems. We were aiming to close on the property by the end of January, but because of the need to change the funding source, they agreed to extend the deadline into early March.
Okay. So we underestimated how much we had available to pay them? That's why we're changing the funding source?
At the time we submitted the request for bond fund, we were at approximately 74 million in our loan transfers, so we had 14 million available. But by the time everything went through, we didn't have 14 million available under our cap anymore, so we need to move 9.1 million.
Member Paulton.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Milner. I was wondering if you could clarify if this is general fund from fiscal year, what fiscal year, and it was like not appropriated, like we just found money, or is it?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Councilmember Paulton. The act for has now been completed. I did submit a chart to the county clerk, and it's also been sent to B-Fed because it's relevant to Bill 15, showing the carryover savings calculation that's available at the moment. So these are FY24 funds that weren't encumbered, so they're available for use.
And that's including the 1.5 that we approved in Members Sugimura's committee?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Councilmember Paulton. Yes, it's still available even with the 1.5.
So that's the email you sent, like in the last day or two?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't, I saw it, but I didn't open it.
Well, glad you know now. Member Sugimura.
Okay, just so everybody knows, the 1.5 is the Maui Fair, right? That's what you're talking about?
Correct.
Okay. She wants to make sure we have the fair. Anyway, yeah, more discussion on Bill 15, so you're not asking that we pass it today. Very important discussion. Thank you.
Yeah, and if there are any questions when you get to these items today, I'll be available, and the Deputy Director of Finance will be available as well.
Deputy Director?
Yes.
Maria?
Marcy is on vacation.
Member Paulton.
So I just opened it up. So the column that says actual FY24 carryover, is that including the 1.5 we took out, or is it not including the 1.5?
So if you scroll all the way to the bottom, you will see a list of approved and pending carryover savings requests, and that includes the 1.5. So the number at the very bottom is what is available after all the pending requests.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much. Now I see it.
Anyone else? If not, thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Chair, currently, the last testifier signed up is Patient Kaisin Kahula, testifying on Resolution 2547.
Do we have an authentic Chinese person today?
We do, and her mom makes amazing Chinese food.
Okay. Good morning, Patient.
Good morning, good morning. Mahalo Chair, mahalo councilmembers, and mahalo mohana. My name is Patient Malie Kaisin Kahula. Aloha Friday. Xie xie. Ni hao ma. So I'm here on behalf of Resolution 2547 before you today. As you recall, may recall, with council support, the CDBG Program Office acquired seven units to date to be offered to seniors displaced by the Maui wildfires. As you heard Amy Johnson testify, seven of the units as well after today, seven of the units are pending acquisitions, six are after today will be occupied. And we are seeking council to take floor action today on Resolution 2547, which pertains to Parkview Square unit. Mahalo, and I will be here for any questions.
Okay. Yeah, we know Chinese too. Happy Manapua. Vice Chair Sugimura.
Good try. So, again, what happened to the seventh unit? Since you brought it up.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. May I?
Yes, of course.
So the seventh unit, I didn't realize that a few windows could not be opened, and so there is a delay. And Amy Johnson might be able to provide more details, but there is a delay in getting the windows in. And so just to address a potential safety hazard, we're going to replace the windows before offering the unit for, to a tenant.
And have we been paying?
Chair, point of order. I know you've been letting it go on and on, but if we're gonna move to pass this on the floor today, we're gonna discuss it when the item comes up. We're in public testimony, and discussion has been going beyond public testimony and into deliberations.
Okay, yeah, we are, I have been a little flexible with that. Just a clarifying question.
I'm fine.
You're done.
I'll answer.
I'll just, I'll just let you know ahead of time, Patient, that when the item comes up, I'll be asking you about, since we're using your CDBG funds primarily to buy new units like condos, what are we not spending on? Like, we are deferring a lot of other grants to other purposes. So I'll be asking you about that, okay?
Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Member Paulton.
Thank you. I wanted to clarify, who is the one that makes the call? I went through the testimony from these folks and other applicants. Is it CDBG that makes the final decision on who it is, or is it Nahale?
You mean on the tenant?
Yeah.
Mahalo, Member Paulton. It's actually the Cameron Center's property managers that will, they've received the applications, they've determined eligibility, and they select the tenants as well.
Is it too late to ask them to be a resource when that item comes up?
You're applying to be here, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, we have questions of this. Anybody else with clarifying questions? If not, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. One quick thing. I'm going to be transferring over to CDBG DR, Disaster Recovery. And so with me today, I have the newly appointed CDBG Program Manager Jolie Jenkins and CDBG Specialist Zaira Koohu. So I just wanted council and them to be introduced.
So you have, there's three people in your office?
Correct.
So who's gonna take the other person's place?
So Jolie Jenkins will be my replacement.
Yeah.
Zaira Koohu will be Specialist One and Shani Kauha'aha's replacement. And then we are seeking, I think we have a candidate for the Specialist Two position, which would replace Laurie Fukushima.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Good to know. Hope you have office space. Okay, thank you. Oh, did you have a question?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Sugimura.
So Jolie Jenkins is a treasure, and she helped do all of our broadband funds. I hope there's somebody that replaced you. I mean, she was like a single solo machine.
Okay, now we're going off subject.
Well, she got introduced.
Aloha mai kakou. My name is Jolie Jenkins. I will be taking over for Patient as the CDBG Program Manager. I'm really excited to support the community in that capacity. As Councilmember Sugimura mentioned, I was the County Broadband Coordinator and the representative for the Broadband Equity Access and Deployment Program. We are still trying to identify a main internal county person to take over the entire role. But for now, my roles and responsibilities have been dispersed amongst a few different departments.
Thank you.
But the consultants will be taking most of the load. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, interesting.
Thank you, Patient. Okay, next testifier.
Chair, we currently do not have anyone else sign up to testify. I see Mr. Law coming down. Just as a pre-warning, we will be going to last call after Mr. Law.
Aloha Kakahia'a, aloha kakou, aloha akaku. Appreciate the new 25 calendar, whoever was at Council Services Office. I'm sorry I missed the meetings. I just glanced at it. I was trying to make it yesterday, but something happened. And it was more important that I stay up in Kula yesterday because there's a lot going on up there. Good morning, Chair.
Morning.
No task is too big when done together. So this is a big, this is gonna be a big task for the Kula people up there, the Bill 13 and Bill 14, the Von Thamesky Kula property acquisition. I want to thank Leslie Milner for keeping us on track with the county budget. And I had some concerns about the US dollars and how much more paper and printing ink they have left to keep on printing out money there. So I guess, to keep it short, I just noticed that the word "property" is getting thrown around a lot, and there's another Hawaiian saying, he ali ikaaina, he kauva kekanaka. The land is chief and man is the servant. So the man is the property, not the land, and I would like to see that changed where, I know there's some buildings on there on the Kula Community Center, Von Thamesky Community Center now, and that's the property, but the land belongs to a Kua, and I would like to make sure that we get that separated out there and use the word "aina" when you refer to land and "property" when you refer to buildings. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Questions, members? No questions. Thank you. Ms. Clerk.
Chair, there's no one else currently signed up to testify, so we will do last call. If you would like to testify, you can raise your hand in teams or make your way to the podium. And the countdown is three, two, one. Chair, there is no one indicating a desire to testify.
Members, any objections to closing public testimony and accepting written testimony at the beginning of the meeting?
No objections.
Thank you. Ms. Clerk.
Chair, we're moving on to resolutions and opening up public testimony for resolutions. Currently, there is no one signed up to testify, so we will do last call. If you would like to testify on any of the resolutions, this is your opportunity. And the countdown is three, two, one. Chair, there is no one indicating a desire to testify in resolutions.
Okay, any objections to closing public testimony on resolutions and accepting written testimony?
No objections.
So order, Ms. Clerk.
Chair, before you, is Resolution 2544, Appointment of Member to the Cost of Government Commission for the County of Maui.
Okay. I'm sorry, what is the number again?
It's Resolution 2544.
2544, that would be Member Uuhu Hodgens.
Yes, it would be me. I moved to adopt Resolution 25-44.
Moved by Member Uuhu Hodgens, seconded by Pro Tem Kama to adopt Resolution 2544. Discussion, Member Uuhu Hodgens.
Thank you. I moved to amend Resolution 25-44 by placing Michelle Louise Cerizo on Exhibit B for approval.
Moved by Member Uuhu Hodgens, seconded by Member Kama to add, I'm sorry, what is the name of something Cerizo? Michelle Cerizo. Okay, discussion, Member Uuhu Hodgens.
Thank you. Members, you might remember, Ms. Cerizo, we have, we had previously put her on the Council of Aging. Her application is in the reso, but for your reference, she's an educator at Baldwin High. She's a lifelong resident of Maui. She participates in Hawaiian Canoe Club. And the Cost of Government Commission is one of those that she would have liked to sit on as well. And I'm happy to support her, and I hope you folks do as well. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair.
Any more discussion, Member Paulton?
So I was wondering if you could refresh my members. She did make it on the Council of Aging?
You know what, that's a good question. She was part of the ones that was, the ones we did before. So I could actually check right now. And you know, I forgot to mention, the reason why we're doing this today is the council's deadline to approve or disapprove this nomination is February 14th.
I'm in full support. I just was wondering if now she's on two commissions, and it's, or if she's on this one and it's not her first choice. Because I had some other ones I wanted to put her on, but like that one was her first choice, so I was just wondering.
Yeah, she, when we interviewed her, she was taking care of her mother, which is what sparked her interest on the Council of Aging. And I'm looking at the members in the Council of Aging now, and I do not see her name.
Okay, and that's the one we approved, Ms. Watanabe and the doctor. So there's no spaces left for her on that one. So she's getting her second one now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Member Paulton.
Any more questions? If not, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand, say aye. Nine ayes, zero noes, motion carries. The motion, re-motion as amended. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Nine ayes, zero noes, motion carries. Ms. Clerk.
Chair, before you, is Resolution 2545, excuse me, approving the Hawaii State Association of Counties Executive Committees' nominations to the National Association of Counties and Western Interstate Region Board of Directors for the 25, 2026 term.
Member Paulton.
Thank you, Chair. I moved to adopt Resolution 25-45.
Moved by Member Paulton, seconded by Vice Chair Sugimura to adopt Resolution 2545. A discussion, Member Paulton.
Thank you. This is, you know, a standard resolution. There are a little bit of small changes. So basically, the HSAAC Executive Committee made the following nominations. Kowai County Councilmember Kipukai Kuualii and Honolulu City Council Chair Tommy Waters have been nominated to serve as NAKO directors for the 25-26 term. Maui County Councilmember Shane Sinensi will stay on as WEAR Director. And Kowai County Councilmember Errol Konishiro will join him for the 25-26 term. And as an aside, Tommy Waters will be stepping down from NAKO to give more, I mean, not NAKO, HSAAC, to give more opportunities. So Matt Wire will be taking his place, Esther Kiaaina, as the alternate. And Bernard Cavalio will stay on. And Felicia Longi Kaudin will serve as the alternate. And we stay the same. And Big Island will stay the same.
Any more discussion? Yes, Member Roland Fernandez.
Mahalo, Chair. I see Kowai twice, and then Oahu and Maui. Did Hawaii County not want involvement in any of these positions?
I believe they did. Mr. Onishi, who just came on, but I don't think he spoke to the right people in time.
Got it, okay. And then for HSAAC officers, are they the same? Or does HSAAC have elections and have different offices?
As of this point, they're the same. I mean, with Matt Wire filling in for Tommy.
Got it. Mahalo, Member Paulton. Yes, Members Sinensi.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to update the council. Excuse me, as you know, the WEAR Conference will be, plans to come to Maui County next year in 2026. So I did want to shout out to our OCS staff, who has helped to get some of the rooms down in Kanapali so that people, it's more affordable for our participants. And then also, happy belated birthday to Uncle Donatay. Uncle Don is always a good advocate for Maui County at the WEAR conferences. He reaches out to a lot of the different counties. So we wanted to appreciate his work as well on the WEAR council. Thank you, Chair.
Aloha, aloha, nau. Happy birthday, happy 38th birthday. I know you're one year older than me, okay? Anybody else? All right, all those in favor of the motion. Oh, by the way, Member Sinensi, is that why we have our four analysts in the back? No? Oh, you're waiting for the, oh, something more important.
Good fortune. We're waiting for good fortune.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand, say aye. Where is?
Mister, I'm sorry, Chair, but Gabe Johnson had to step away for a moment.
Eight ayes, one excuse, Member Johnson. Motion carries. Now, where were we?
We're at the bottom of Page 4. For referral to the Government Relations Ethics and Transparency Committee as Resolution 2546, authorizing settlement of conservation council for Hawaii and American Bird Conservancy versus Hawaiian Electric Company Inc. and Maui Electric LTD and County of Maui, case number 124CV009494MWJSWRP.
Okay, members, any objections to referring this matter to the great committee? So ordered.
Chair, before you, is Resolution 2547, authorizing a grant of lease of county real property to Nahalei Kupuna Lesi.
Vice Chair Sugimura.
I moved to adopt Resolution 25-47.
Second. Moved by Vice Chair Sugimura, seconded by Pro Tem Kama to adopt Resolution 2547. Discussion, Vice Chair Sugimura.
Yeah, thank you. I guess we had some discussion on this. You are getting an ASF from my office. And it is, you received it. The original resolution transmitted by the administration was not signed by Corporation Council and also required technical revisions. As revised, as referenced in my ASF, I move to substitute Resolution 2547 with the proposed FD1 version attached to my ASF.
Second.
Thank you.
Moved by Member, Vice Chair Sugimura, seconded by Pro Tem Kama to adopt the attach of the ASF that was distributed. Discussion, Vice Chair Sugimura.
So the proposed FD1 version incorporates, as I said earlier, technical revisions. But I think the most important thing is that the copy that we got was not signed by Corporation Council. So that has been resolved, so it's now signed. And I respectfully request for the members' support of my motion.
Member Paulton.
Thank you. I just would like to ask a question of the resource. I see that.
Ms. Kahula.
Or actually, Nahalei Kupuna project?
Oh, okay.
It says that 37 applicants fell at or below 30% AMI. 13 applicants were between 31 and 50% AMI. And five applicants were between 51 and 80% of AMI. I just, you know, for transparency and for the public's sake, I was wondering, with so many applicants competing for limited kupuna housing, ultimately, how is the decision made?
Thank you for your question. Yes, we, part of the process was informing the public.
Could you move closer to the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you. Part of the process was informing the public of the project. So with the press release that the county put out in November 13th, then we started the, pretty much the ad campaign and promotion of the project. We, in consultation with CDBG, determined that the most equitable way to look at applications was by timestamp. So we had a website or webpage created on our website that allowed people to sign up for application appointments. And that's how the, that's how they were in the waitlist, if you will, or the number of applications.
It was first come, first served?
Correct.
Okay, correct. Thank you.
Any more questions? If not, I have a question for, Vice Chair, I'm not being, Councilmember Roland Fernandez.
Mahalo, Chair. Mahalo for being with us. Sorry, I forgot your last name.
Johnson.
Johnson. Mahalo, Ms. Johnson, for being with us. I know the answer to Member Paulton's question was that it's decided, decisions on who is awarded a lease is based on first come, first served. How do you ensure that, you know, those closest to the program, their, you know, circles aren't necessarily the ones that are getting in first? I guess, how do you ensure that there isn't that level of insider information? And then to follow up with that, when there's a vacancy, how will you let folks know that one of the units is available to be leased to someone new?
Thank you, thank you for your question. To ensure that there is no insider information, that was why we went really full-on with the promotion of the project. After the press release on November 13th, we promoted both social media, media outlets. It was picked up by county and state outlets. And the calendar to make appointments opened on December 3rd. So we gave people, you know, a couple of weeks leeway to get the word out and make sure that everybody was informed. As far as how we maintain the eligibility is that everyone, all of the applications were reviewed for eligibility. Those who were eligible are placed, were either placed in a unit or placed on a waitlist. And those who were not eligible were given that information and told what the, you know, why they did not meet the eligibility requirements. When we have units that, we still have one vacant unit, when that becomes available or when there's a vacancy in one of the current units, we do maintain that waitlist. And that is based on what the applicant say their area, their geographic area is of where they would like to live. And we just then go through the list and find out what their, what their situation is.
Mahalo, Ms. Johnson. Mahalo, Chair.
Pro Tem Kama.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for being here, Ms. Johnson. So your waitlist, you have a waitlist now of, how long? How long do people stay on that waitlist? I mean, how long is your waitlist always gonna be there?
Thank you, thank you for your question. That waitlist will remain as long as people need housing. And our plan is to periodically, probably every, every six months or so, to check back in with those, with those folks and find out where they stand. We have had people take their names off of the waiting list because they found other housing. And yeah, we're hoping to just, to just keep that, keep that maintained indefinitely.
And your lease is for how long?
The lease is for 12 months and can automatically renew with the tenants as long as they continue to meet all eligibility requirements.
Oh, it's an automatic renewal?
Yes, as long as, as if they want to remain, we want them to remain. It's about permanent housing.
Okay, thank you.
Member Paulton.
Thank you. Are any of the units considered ADA?
Thank you. There is one unit that is an ADA unit. It is populated by a tenant who does have a disability. And that's current, that's the only one unit that has that ADA specification.
Okay, and was that in your advertising materials that only one unit was an ADA?
It was not specific as to, as to the units. It was just the total number of units and the eligibility requirement.
I'm having a little issue with FEMA not providing ADA for people that need ADA. And like then FEMA and the state are like, because they're eligible for FEMA, but FEMA is not giving them an ADA. And so it's difficult. So if we do acquire more units, it might be helpful if they're ADA. I have like a 70-year-old carrying his 93-year-old mother-in-law up and downstairs after she broke her hip because she was in an unfamiliar environment because FEMA stopped paying the rental assistance. And so it's like, people are going down and falling through the cracks. So more ADA would be nice.
Thank you, thank you, I agree. And if I could just say one thing about the, the unit that is not yet populated, that we're waiting on repairs. This was something that we discovered as we were starting the project. And the Cameron Center actually was successful in acquiring funding from Hawaii Community Foundation to make those renovations because there was a, a funding gap, that there was no money to make those renovations. So that, those things are being taken care of by the Community Foundation and their generosity.
Okay, we have Corporation Council Deputy, Mimi Deja, Dan.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to clarify that the term of the lease is from February 21st, 2025, to January 20th, 2026. 11 months. Thank you.
So it automatically renews after the 11 months?
Yes, if the tenant so desires.
Okay, any more questions before we take a vote? Yes, Vice Chair Sugimura. Okay.
So that came up when my staff were talking about this. 11 months is kind of unusual. Is it because of closing? Or what made it 11 and not 12? Or is this always gonna be a unusual renewal?
Thank you for that question. Actually, it should be a 12-month lease. And that was perhaps a typo or an inadvertent error. We can work with 11 months, but it would typically be 12 months.
Member Johnson?
Chair, thank you, Ms. Johnson, for all your hard work. You know, what customer Paulton brought up about the importance of having ADU for Americans with Disabilities, you know, like making it available for folks with disabilities. How about that seventh unit that you guys are still repairing? Could you get more funnies from HCF to make that last one ADA compliant? Is that something you folks would consider?
Thank you for that question. The configuration of the unit, while it is a six-floor unit and does have elevator access, the configuration of the unit would not allow for strict ADA compliance because the bathroom is so small.
Okay, worth a shot that ask. Thank you, Chair.
Any more questions? I have questions for patients, but I'll do it offline because we have guests waiting. All right, thank you, and so we have to take the vote. Quick, all those in favor of the motion? This is the ASF, the amendment. Raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes, motion carries. Then you have another motion, Member Vice Chair Sugimura.
So this is funny because this is what I put, I wanted to make sure that our House rules have, which is Rule 19, Rules of the Council to allow final action at the same meeting as an amendment is proposed. And so I had therefore moved to suspend Rule 19.
Second. Okay, move to suspend Rule 19 to allow final action. Moved by Vice Chair Sugimura, seconded by Pro Tem Kama. More discussion?
This rule suspension is needed so we can take final action today.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand, say aye. Nine ayes, zero noes. Motion carries. Main motion as amended. Any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand, say aye. Hurry up, I hear the drums. I hear the drums. Wait, is Member Johnson frozen?
Oh, there.
Nine ayes, zero noes. Motion carries.
Thank you, members.
All right, members, we're going to call a short recess, probably until 10:15. Okay? Motion in, motion. Meeting in recess.
Well, the council meeting of February 7th, 2025, please reconvene, Ms. Clerk.
Chair before you is Resolution 2548 referring to the La Ni Mauai and Molokai Planning Commissions, a proposed bill on restrictions and standards for bed and breakfast homes.
Well, I just mentioned if we have anything on Molokai. Oh, here. Okay, Member Paulton.
Thank you, Chair. I move to adopt Resolution 2548, and if I get a second, I'll explain my reasoning.
Okay, moved by Member Paulton, seconded by Member Cook, to adopt the resolution, and discussion, Member Paulton.
Thank you, Chair. During our tenure, me and you, we had discussed about people moving to the county to start bed and breakfasts or building houses for the purpose of bed and breakfast. And so, we didn't necessarily want that to happen. We wanted folks established in the community before they started bed and breakfast. But we neglected a circumstance where the entire town burned. So we had that non-conformity issue with the bed and breakfast owner, but if somebody had a permit bed and breakfast and it burnt down, this would fix that for those folks.
Okay. Any more discussion? Member Sugimura?
So I understand what Member Paulton is saying. I will say that in previous situations where a bill was going from us to the planning commissions, the commissions asked for us to have a committee discussion so they could understand what we wanted. And so, I'm going to vote no, just because I want to be consistent with other actions we've taken in the past, regardless of the wildfire. But we do know what the planning commissions have asked us to do as a body, so that I would like it to be referred to committee.
Okay, ordinarily, I would agree with you, but in this case, I am not, only because the time is of the essence with this particular item, and this is kind of almost self-explanatory. So, yes, in the future, members, we have to be careful about how we refer things to the commissions. Like, you know, a lot of times, we refer things without even having discussion. The commissions don't like that. They want direction from the council. But in this particular case, I think this is an exception to the rule. So...
I have a question.
Yes. Vice Chair Sugimura.
So we're having discussion, in fact, we have a recess meeting on Bill 105. So how does this impact 105, Court Counsel?
Court Counsel?
You know, I'm going to defer to Member Paulton, because I am jumping in to help with the Tuesday meeting, but I am not completely up to speed on that yet. Thank you.
Member Paulton.
Thank you. This bill doesn't affect 105 per se, because it's for folks that had bed and breakfast home permits. And 105 is for non-conforming bed and breakfasts or TVRs and things like that. So, you know, if for whatever reason, the individual that came and testified did not get the non-conforming through, this would be another avenue for her to pursue, but the financing probably wouldn't work out because of the situation we heard explained. But for anyone that had a bed and breakfast home permit, they would be able to rebuild their house and apply for the permit without waiting five years.
Good. So it's really helping people. All right. But vote how you want. Roll call.
Councilmember Pro Tem Pori Tasha Kama?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sugimura?
With that explanation, suppose it's yes.
Councilmember Paulton?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Rollins Fernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Uuhodgens?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinancy?
Aye.
And Chair Lee?
Aye.
Chair, the motion carries unanimously. Okay, next item. Chair for referral to the Disaster Recovery International Affairs and Planning Committee is Resolution 2549 authorizing the acquisition of approximately 24,018 square feet identified as tax map key number 245007028 situated at Lahaina, Maui, Hawaii for an amount not to exceed $1.7 million.
Any objections to referring this to the Drip Committee?
No objections.
So ordered.
Chair, we're now in ordinances. We have no one signed up to testify, so I will do last call. If there is anyone who would like to testify on ordinances, this is your opportunity. And the countdown is three, two, one. Chair, there is no one indicating a desire to testify.
Any objections to accepting written testimony and closing public testimony on these ordinances? So ordered, Ms. Clerk.
Chair before you is Bill 10, 2025, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the County of Maui to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Hawaii Department of Health/Behavioral Health Administration for an emergency response grant.
Member Paulton.
Thank you, Chair. I move to pass Bill 10 on first reading.
Moved by Member Paulton, seconded by Vice Chair Sugimura to pass Bill 10 on first reading. Discussion, Member Paulton.
Thank you, Chair. I move to amend. Bill 10 is proposed in my amendment summary form that has been distributed by the clerk. I move to amend Bill 10 as follows. One, by replacing the United States Army Corps of Engineers with State of Hawaii Department of Health/Behavioral Health Administration. And two, by replacing technical services with training initiatives to build capacity within Maui to deliver mental health services as stated in recital B of the memorandum agreement.
It's been moved and seconded to amend Bill 10 with the ASF as read. Discussion, Member Paulton.
Thank you, Chair. The proposed amendments are needed to align the bill with the memorandum of agreement.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion of the amendment, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes, motion carries. Any more discussion on the main motion? As amended? If not, all those in favor of the main motion as amended, raise your hand, say aye. Nine ayes, never Johnson. Nine ayes, zero noes, motion carries, Ms. Clerk.
Chair before you is Bill 11, 2025, a bill for an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2025 budget for the County of Maui Appendix A, Part 1, Department of Public Works, United States Department of Agriculture Natural Resources Conservation Service additional funding.
Vice Chair Sugimura.
Chair, if there are no objections, may I please ask the clerk to also call up Bill 12, 2025?
Any objections to calling up Bill 12, 2025? So ordered, Ms. Clerk.
Chair before you is Bill 12, 2025, a bill for an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2025 budget for the County of Maui Appendix A, Part 1, Department of Police, PAO, Forensic Science Improvement Act.
Vice Chair Sugimura.
I move to pass Bill 11, 2025, and Bill 12, 2025 on first reading.
Moved by Vice Chair Sugimura, seconded by Pro Tem Kama, to pass Bills 11 and 12 on first reading. Discussion, Vice Chair Sugimura.
Bill 11, 2025 amends...
Closer to your mic.
Bill 11, 2025 amends fiscal year 25 budget by increasing the Department of Public Works grant appropriation entitled United States Department of Agriculture Natural Resources Conservation Services by $2,574,250. The grant funds are from an IGA agreement with USDA for technical financial assistance for the Kalani Hakoi Stream Sediment Removal Emergency Watershed Project close to Member Cook's heart, and I respectfully ask for the members' support for my motion.
And that other one?
Oh, sorry. Bill 12 amends fiscal year 25 budget by increasing the Department of Police the grant appropriation entitled PAO Forensic Science Improvement Act by $112,478. For these additional funds will be used to replace an obsolete gas chromatograph spectrometer for the use of forensic drug analysis. I respectfully ask for the members' support of my motion. Thank you.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand, say aye. Nine ayes, zero noes, motion carries, Ms. Clerk.
Chair before you is Bill 13, 2025, a bill for an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2025 budget for the County of Maui Estimated Revenues and Capital Improvement Projects, Department of Management, Makualu, Pukalani, Kula Community Plan Area.
Vice Chair Sugimura.
If there are no objections, may I please ask the clerk to also call up Bill 14, 2025?
Any objections? No objections, Ms. Clerk.
Chair before you is Bill 14, 2025, a bill for an ordinance amending ordinance number 5659, Bill number 62CD1, 2024 relating to the issuance of general obligation bonds of the County of Maui, issuance, sale, and delivery of said bonds, Department of Management.
Vice Chair Sugimura.
I move to pass Bill 13, 2025, and Bill 14, 2025 on first reading.
Moved by Vice Chair Sugimura, seconded by Pro Tem Kama, to pass Bills 13, 2025, and 14, 2025 on first reading. Discussion.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Sugimura, and then Member Paulton.
Okay. So Ms. Milner explained this, but Bill 13 amends fiscal year 25 budget by changing some of the funding for the Von Tamski property acquisition from bond funds to carryover savings from the general fund. The total acquisition, as you remember, is 14.1 million. Five million in bond funds is covering the initial escrow deposit, while the remaining 9.1 million will come from carryover savings. Also, oh, Bill 14 amends bond authorization ordinance to account for the change in bond funds for the acquisition. To remain under the unreimbursed transfer and loans ceiling of $100 million, the administration is requesting this transfer funds from bond funds to general fund for the previously approved acquisition of the Von Tamski property in Kula, Maui. I did check with the Von Tamskis, and they do know that their closing has been moved then from January 31st to March 7th, the date that Budget Director gave this morning. But this movement of funds will allow the project to close at the designated time.
Member Paulton.
Thank you. I believe Ms. Milner said that there was a resource available. I just had a couple questions.
Ms. Milner?
Budget Director is online.
We see her. Are you ready for the questions, Member, I mean, Ms. Milner? Okay, Member Paulton.
Yes, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Ms. Milner. My last recollection was we were holding off on floating a bond because the interest rates weren't super favorable at the time that we had that discussion. And I don't see them possibly getting more favorable in light of the tragedies going on in LA. And I was wondering if you could fill us in on the plans to float a bond if the interest rates are getting worse and we got a lot of work to be doing on our own recovery, you know, before we deplete all of our carryover savings. Can we just know what the plan is to float a new bond?
Director?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Councilmember Paulton. I believe Deputy Director Zalinski is on as well. But what I'll state of that is our current plan is to float a bond in August. We were hoping to do it earlier this year, but given the uncertainty around some of our situation, waiting to hear about CDB, GDR, and some other things, in consultation with Managing Director, Department of Finance, and Bond Counsel, it was determined that delaying until August would put us in a more favorable position. And I will defer to Deputy Director Zalinski to provide further details on that.
Deputy Zalinski?
She's on.
Hello?
Do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Yeah, just to add, at the time, we were actually initially thinking about January of 2025. That was, this was back in, you know, several months ago. But because of the issue of the lawsuit, which wasn't really kind of resolved, or, you know, whether there was going to be a settlement, the DR funding was still uncertain. Those were other pieces or other considerations that we had to make, in addition to as Budget Director Milner has indicated, and you indicated, Councilmember Paulton, the interest rate, and which, of course, continues to be relatively high. And with all the uncertainty in Washington, who knows what it will be. But we are getting to the point where we know we do have to, and we're actually have been working with our Bond Counsel and our municipal advisor, and we've actually got a calendar scheduled, so that we'll be issuing the bonds in August. So, but those are the other reasons why we did hold off. It wasn't just the interest rate. It was all that uncertainty, because that uncertainty will actually could, will translate to a higher interest rate potentially if there was that uncertainty. So, that was part of it. We wanted to protect and save some money. And that's the good news. We've got, you know, things are somewhat better than what they were six months ago as far as uncertainty.
If I could follow up, what is the reason for choosing August? And if the interest rate continues to climb from where we're at now, what kind of debt service are we looking at?
Ms. Zalinski?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, thank you, Chair. Yeah, August was chosen because typically, when we talk to the municipal advisor, and at this point, I think all, I was going to say rule of thumb, but all rules of thumb seem to be thrown out the window with everything going on in Washington. But having said that, January and August tend to be months where there's less bond issuances from other municipalities. So when you have less, you know, government entities putting out for, you know, bond issuances, there's more, you know, there's more interest from, you know, from the investors. So that's really the reason we chose August. Also, August is a time, because there's so much work that has to be done from now until August, this is a time where we're not, finance in particular, are not, I mean, they're always busy, but not as busy as working on the ACFA, the financial report. Once you get past June, then it's, you know, they're super busy with trying to close the books and do all the adjusting entries and working with the auditors. So from now until August, and, you know, we'll get all that, a lot of that work done, but there's a lot of, a lot of work that has to be done. So it's a little of both. Availability of funds, or less, there's less availability or more availability in August, and also the fact that from a standpoint of workload for the finance.
And then the other part was if, like, see, if the interest rate remains at what it is now, what kind of debt service are we looking at?
Well, we're looking at, right now, they're still talking about four and a half percentage, you know, as far as debt. Again, I don't know what that will be. Now, we're still, budget is still working on the numbers as far as what CIP needs will be. So in addition to that $100 million that we know that we've... that we know that we've got to cover in bonds because of the cash that we've already spent, and we've got to cover that CIP, we're also, we would have to add whatever the Budget Director is ultimately and what the administration is saying that they need in CIP. So that hasn't been finalized yet. So I wouldn't be able to give you a number at this point in time until after budget is finalized.
Okay, but the interest rate is at four and a half right now, you're saying?
It's approximately. That's kind of the number they're giving us, is they're saying give or take four and a half percent. It could be a little less, it could be a little more. Now, that's assuming tax exempt, okay? If it's taxable, it would be a little more. But again, we don't know. Right now, there's a lot of push by the Republicans to eliminate tax-exempt bonds. From what we hear from our advisors, they don't think it'll go through. But, you know, they're looking everywhere. I mean, they're closing shop everywhere, as we know and seeing with the, you know, with the current events are. So who knows what they'll do to try to save some money? I don't know. But they seem to think that, or our advisors seem to think that it probably won't happen because so many governmental entities and other organizations will probably do a lot of lobbying. Hard to say.
And this is the new advisors, not the ones we had before, the munchin', something, something folks?
Oh, Katn, you mean, yeah, the bond advisor now is different. It's a new bond advisor, and our municipal advisor is also different. So, but he's been here before, that's correct, I promise. He's Columbia Advisors, they, Columbia Capital.
So the advice we're getting now is from our new bond counsel and municipal advisor?
Correct.
Okay, all right, sorry. I didn't mean to hog, I'll yield to my colleagues.
Any more questions? Vice Chair Sugimura.
Great discussion. And Bill 15, when it comes to my committee, we can talk about all of this. This is very involved. Thank you.
Thank you. And one of the questions I will have, Deputy Finance Director, is with this, you know, like you said, 100 million to cover and all the other projects that, we don't know, all the projects that have been or are going to be deferred or not done as a result, which lends itself to all this carryover savings. This carryover savings is coming from someplace. And so, we need to know which projects are not going forward as a result. And when we do take up Bill 15. Maria? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the motion to pass Bills 13 and 14 on first reading, please raise your hand, say aye. Nine ayes, zero noes, motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Clerk.
Chair for referrals to the Budget, Finance, and Economic Development Committee is Bill 15, 2025, a bill for an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2025 budget for the County of Maui, Estimated Revenues, Department of Finance, Countywide Costs, and Capital Improvement Projects, Department of Management, Countywide.
Members, any objections to referring this matter to the BFED Committee? No, no objections, so ordered. Ms. Clerk.
Chair, under ordinances for second and final reading before you is Bill 4, 2025, a bill for an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2025 budget for the County of Maui, Appendix A, Part 1, Department of Police, State and Federal Assets Forfeiture Program.
Vice Chair Sugimura.
Chair, if there's no objections, may I please request the clerk also call up Bill 5 and Bill 6, 2025?
No objections, so ordered. Ms. Clerk.
Chair, before you are Bills 5, 2025, a bill for an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2025 budget for the County of Maui Appendix A, Part 1, Department of Management, Private Donations, and Bill 6, 2025, a bill for an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2025 budget for the County of Maui, Department of Housing Program General.
Vice Chair Sugimura.
I move to pass Bill 4, 5, 6, 2025 on second and final reading.
Moved by Vice Chair Sugimura, seconded by Member Pro Tem Kama to pass Bills 4, 5, and 6 on second and final reading. Discussion, Vice Chair Sugimura.
No further discussion.
All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes, motion carries.
Thank you, members.
Yeah. Have a great weekend, aloha. Meeting adjourned.